Good evening. It's seven o'clock, so I'd like to call to order the Committee of the Whole of the Urbana City Council. And could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Wood?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Ms. Colasetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
And I'm here, too.
Mayor Marlin?
Mayor, are you here?
All right, first order of business is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. There aren't any. So we will move on to additions or changes to the agenda. I understand there's a change.
Yes, we're going to move the discussion on fire station programming to next week.
All right, thank you.
And that will give, that will give time for council members to complete the surveys. Still waiting on a couple.
Any, any other changes to the agenda? All right, moving on. Now's the time for public input. If you would like to address the Committee of the Whole, please come to the microphone and state your name. Did any council members have public input they wanted to share? All right. Seeing none, we'll move ahead to staff reports. No staff reports? All right. First order of new business for this evening is an ordinance number 2022-10-042, an ordinance approving a major variance. Woodward Garage at 2003 Airport Road, case number ZBA-2022-MAG-05.
Hi, everybody.
Good evening.
All right. This is a request by Stephen and Deborah Woodward for a major variance to allow a 40-foot by 100-foot garage at 2003 Airport Road. At the September 21st, 2022, meeting, the zoning board of appeals forwarded this case to city council with a recommendation of approval with three conditions. Staff finds that the case meets five of the six variance criteria and therefore concurs with the ZBA recommendation of approval. This is a location map of the property. It's located on the south side of Airport Road, east of Cunningham Avenue. The applicants purchased this property earlier this year in June. The property is approximately two and a half acres and the existing house is approximately 2,300 square feet. The requested variance would allow the applicants to build a 4,000-square-foot Morton-style building for Mr. Woodward to store and work on his collectible cars. The proposed garage would exceed the maximum area allowed for accessory structures, so a variance is required to allow the request. This is a zoning map of the property. It is zoned R1, single-family residential, and it is surrounded by R2, single and two-family residential, nearby or other residences in the Landis Farms and Somerset subdivisions. And as you can see from this map, the site is substantially larger than the surrounding residential properties. Here are a few site photos. The applicants request the variance to allow a 4,000-square-foot garage in the backyard of their property. The existing house is 2,300 square feet with an attached two-car garage on the east side. There's also a 700-square-foot shed in the backyard. Mr. Woodward collects and works on cars in his free time, and he would like to build a garage as a storage and workspace. The garage would not be considered a second principal structure or a home occupation as the use is recreational and incidental to the principal use, which is the house. The garage would be larger than the maximum permitted 1,000-square-foot accessory structure, so a variance is required. This is the backyard looking south, so it's on the northern half of the lot, which I'm going to pop back to the location map for a second. About down the center of the lot runs a wooden fence, and you can see it in this photo, a little bit behind these trees. And this is the existing shed. These are some of the houses to the east. And then this is Airport Road looking east, and there's west. Here's the site plan. I'll reference this throughout. The property is significantly larger than other residentially-zoned properties in the city and nearby. The applicants purchased the property with the impression that the larger-than-average lot size would leave plenty of room for the desired garage. The zoning ordinance limits accessory structures in residential districts to a maximum of 1,000 square feet regardless of the lot size. The regulations were designed to prevent accessory structures from dominating the principal structure on residential lots and to ensure that structures comply with the development regulations for the district. The floor area ratio for this property, including the proposed garage, would be approximately 0.06, and the maximum would be 0.30 for a lot in the R1 district. The open space ratio would be approximately 14, and the requirement in R1 is 0.5. The maximum height for an accessory structure in a residential district is 15 feet, measured to the midpoint of a pitched roof. The proposed garage would be subject to the city's building permit and plan review process for new construction. The building must meet all other zoning ordinance requirements and building code requirements for the R1, single-family residential zoning district. No commercial activity would be permitted on the property as it is zoned R1, and the use would be required to comply with all of the requirements for city code, including the noise ordinance. Given the size of the property, the proposed garage would be larger than the house but would still be incidental to the principal use and would comply with all of the other development regulations for R1. An attached garage of this size could be built into the existing house without a variance. However, given the layout of the house and the large size of the lot, the applicants would like to build the garage as a standalone building in the backyard. This is a photo of a Morton building. This is what the applicants are using as reference for the design of the building. They do not have building plans at this time as we're kind of hinging that on the variance request. I'll recap the zoning board of appeals real quick. You guys also had minutes from the August meeting. I will provide minutes from the September meeting at the city council meeting next week. They weren't prepared yet prior to this meeting. Staff published a legal ad in the News Gazette to notify the public of the request and a public hearing 15 days prior to the zoning board of appeals meeting. Staff also sent letters to 62 neighboring property owners within 300 feet of the subject property notifying them of the request and posted a public hearing sign on the property. Eight people spoke in opposition to the requested variance. They were concerned about the size and setback of the proposed garage and the potential for fumes and noise generated by any automated work on the vehicles and from the vehicles themselves. They were also concerned about the reduction of green space and the potential for future commercial or industrial activity or storage on the lot. The zoning board of appeals requested that the applicants provide a revised site plan showing an increased setback from the property lines for the proposed garage and a photo of the proposed building type. So this is the building type shown here, and I'll go back to the site plan. On September 21st, 2022, the zoning board of appeals reopened the continued public hearing. Staff presented the revised site plan for the garage, now 50 feet by 80 feet, where it was 40 by 100, with a 10-foot setback from the east property line. During that zoning board of appeals meeting, the zoning board suggested that the garage be re-centered on the lot, so that is what you're seeing here today, with 40-foot setbacks from the east and west property lines. A condition of approval was also added to the variance to require an engineering review as part of the building review permit process. To summarize, staff found that the application meets five of the six variance criteria. The variance will not serve as a special privilege as the property is significantly larger than the standard residential lot size. The variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood as the property was not platted as part of Landis Farms or Somerset subdivisions, and the property is much larger than the adjacent lots. The variance will not cause a nuisance to adjacent property owners as the garage will be centered on the lot and setback at least 40 feet from the side property lines. The variance does not represent the minimum deviation necessary from the zoning ordinance simply because the applicants could build it attached to their house, although for several reasons stated, it makes more sense to have it detached and centered on the lot. Given the excess space on the property and the layout of the house, the applicants would like to construct the detached garage in their backyard, so the variance is required. These are a couple of obliques. So you can see the fence running through the middle of the property here. This is looking north, and this is looking east. The city council has the following options on the requested major variance: approve the ordinance as requested based on the findings outlined in this memo, or approve the ordinance with certain terms and conditions, or deny the ordinance. If the city council elects to do so, it should articulate findings supporting the denial. At the September 21st, 2022, meeting, the zoning board of appeals voted with four As and one Nay to forward this case to city council with the recommendation to approve the request with the following conditions, and they're shown on the screen for clarity's sake. The garage shall generally conform to the Morton building design shown in Exhibit G. The garage plans must be reviewed by the city engineer as a part of the building permit plan review process, and the garage shall be centered on the property in accordance with the revised site plan in Exhibit H. Staff concurs with the zoning board of appeals' recommendation, and the applicant is here to make a statement. I can also take any questions for staff.
Kat, do we want to do questions first, or do we want to hear the statement from the applicant first? Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Why don't you come up and make your statement? Can you join Kat at the table there and use the microphone, please?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring in to effect the magnitude of the land and that the reason behind is my husband collects cars, and that's why we need...
Excuse me, could you speak into the microphone?
Is that better?
Yeah, or pull it closer, pull it closer to you.
Sorry. Is that better?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm soft-spoken, sorry. The reason behind, as Kat stated, is we do collect a lot of cars, and we need the structure to store those cars. And also with the property, the current garage is a 20-by-24 that's attached to the house, so it will also have some of our daily drivers in that additional square footage of that, the garage.
All right, thank you. Mary Alice, you had a question?
Yeah, I have several questions, but since the applicant is here, thank you for coming. You said that there would be daily drivers in the, in the new proposed garage? Do you, does that mean you have more than two drivers in your household, I'm assuming?
I think she meant cars, not drivers.
Cars. I'm sorry.
Oh, you meant cars, I'm sorry. Okay.
When I said daily drivers, I mean cars. I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's all right.
Terminology, good question.
So Kate, you said that there was, it was unanimous on the slide, but then you said that there was one Nay on the zoning board of appeals?
Yeah, I apologize about that. There were two cases that night. This one had four As and one Nay.
Can you summarize why the one Nay?
Yeah, I think his main justification behind his vote was because the garage could be attached to the house if the owners chose to go that route. They're asking for a variance for the reasons we've, you know, established in the memo. And he just simply disagreed with that.
Okay. And then, so it's no longer 45 degrees. That's what was in our packet. It's been rotated to be parallel to the back line, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
Just for clarification, for everybody's sake, I included all three site plans to see how this has changed from the beginning to now. And as the, you know, setback has increased, I think there's been some compromise on all sides, going from the first site plan, which was, you know, I don't think very well-established, to the second site plan, which was setback about 10 feet off of the east property line. Now it's centered, so you can see where the setback has increased.
Say that they decided to divvy up the land and have two parcels, three parcels, whatever it may be. Would they need to go through the zoning board of appeals to build a 4,000-square-foot garage on one of those parcels? Can you build a garage on R1?
You could not have a principal-use garage on its own lot. So this is an accessory structure. You could not just build a garage on its own lot without a house there as a principal structure in R1.
Okay, all right. And then was there any consideration right now? There's, you said a 700-square-foot barn, I guess, for horses? Was there any consideration in terms of removing that and replacing it with a larger garage?
Yeah, that came up in the other, and currently, I know it seems bizarre, but we need all of that space. So we need that space also with the other structure.
The barn space is what I'm hearing you say.
Correct. We have a lot of collectible cars. It's my husband's hobby, and instead of having in three different buildings across the town, we're trying to bring everything home so we can look at it at home.
Okay. So then, if you wouldn't mind pulling up the subdivision for me?
Sure. The map?
The map, that would be great. I think that the structure would be in the site of four different properties, but I just want to confirm.
Yeah, that's probably accurate. When it was offset on the east side, two were going to be directly affected. Now that it's set off in the center of the lot, I mean, yeah, you could argue that four are being...
I did notice in some of the pictures that there were trees, and that was one of the reasons for having it at 45 degrees is, are you going to still have those trees, or because of this new site plan, you'll have to cut them down?
Because of having to move the site, we're going to have to cut at least two of them down. That's why originally we tried to make it more aligned, but we are also listening to the concerns of the neighborhood. One side is all fenced, so they don't see our yard, but the other side do look onto our yard, and that's why we went from the five that was required to 10 in the second design, and then now we're at 40 feet from a clearance that they don't see a building right at their end of their yard. They have another 40 feet of our land that they can see of green space.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Chris.
Yeah, thanks for coming down. Could you, are you going to build a driveway to the garage?
Yes, there'll be a, alongside the current driveway, we'll extend it that will go into that garage.
Do you want to address the noise and fume concerns of your neighbors?
I don't know where that came from, to be honest. So the garage that we're building is going to be insulated and lined. So it's going to be totally, what I call immaculate inside, and there's, I mean, there shouldn't be any more noise than the dogs that are next door that are barking.
So when you say, does your husband work on the cars while they'll be in the garage?
He just, I want to say it in a nice way, kind of piddles with them.
Okay.
Maybe change soil, but nothing of...
So there's no major reconstruction or...
No.
Taking out an engine and doing all that?
We're too old for some of that nowadays.
And your cars are in pretty good shape. They don't need that, right?
They're collectibles.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
All right, Teresa.
Yeah, that was basically what I was going to, so he, there won't be, there won't be cars on the yard and cars out all over the place. This is more like a showroom thing that you're trying to put together.
Correct, and we believe in storing all of our vehicles inside garage. Ours are garage-cap, immaculate. We don't like to keep our vehicles outside.
So roughly, you have more than five, less than 12?
Cars. Yeah, 10 at the current time.
Okay.
So 10 to 11, and that's the other reason for where the garage will be because we want it side of line for the house from a security standpoint versus putting it far into the very back of the area because it'd be concerned from a security standpoint.
And you said there won't be anything like, you know, Pimp My Ride things happening in the garage? You don't know what that is, do you?
No, I don't know. I'm sorry.
There's a show that where they take cars apart and they mash them together and stuff like that, and they, it's called Pimping Your Ride.
Oh, Pimping Your Ride, okay, yeah.
So that's okay. You know, the fact that you don't even know what that means, I don't, I don't think I have to worry about that happening. It's just, it could be something very noisy, so that's what I was just wondering. You know, if there was going to be any kind of reconstruction or something like that of your vehicles? Not to mention the other factor that would happen regarding chemicals, soils, and all that kind of stuff. You just want to store them.
Store them and wax and polish them. If you want to have chemicals, that would probably be it.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, Grace.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentations. I have a few comments leading up to questions, I promise. I watched both those ZBA meetings and appreciate the work that happened there. I think that's a great example of the commissions doing a lot of work and input before it comes to council and getting to those compromises. So I just want to say thank you in particular to all the neighbors that came out and their engagement and participation, and the applicants for providing information and being open to listen to the concerns of the neighbors and being flexible. And also all the volunteers on ZBA for their time and consideration, looking at all the different perspectives and seeking reasonable compromises. And of course, the staff. Looks like Kat and Lily had very thorough proposals and a lot of patience answering questions and bringing this to committee of the whole and not straight to council. I appreciate all of those things. And I think this seems like a really reasonable compromise throughout the different iterations, and I'm happy to hear any more input. I haven't received any emails, and we didn't have any neighbors here tonight. So my question, first question is, has there been any additional input? Because it's kind of the ZBA meeting, you know, they made the final compromise, and then we didn't have a chance to hear from people again. So I was wondering if you've heard any additional input or have a sense if there's satisfaction with this most recent update?
Yeah, I've not received any further input since the zoning board meeting. I would say that I think increasing the setback from, from five feet to 10 feet and then from 10 feet to 40-plus really addressed a lot of the concerns that had been brought up. So I would imagine that's why we haven't heard anything else.
Thank you. Yeah, it seems like this was, you know, a very reasonable compromise with each side kind of give and take, so I appreciate that flexibility and being able to navigate coming to that. I had a question. If the applicants were to consider selling like that back half of the lot, would their floor area ratio thing still apply? And not that it really has to do with yes or no on this, but just something to consider that, you know, building this big of a space, if you would be eligible to keep that or you need the whole property to maintain that ratio?
So I'm going to look at it on here. I had it calculated at .06. So if you cut the lot in half, straight up, it would double. That's based on the amount of land area to the amount of gross floor area. So it would double to .12, which is well under the maximum allowed, .30. I will just point out that that lot, if you did cut it off, would need access to a street by the subdivision and land use code. So it's likely not feasible. I won't say it's impossible, but they would have to have access to a, to a local road somehow.
Okay. Yeah, and again, not really pertinent, but just curious, but it sounds like even with half the lot, they're still fine with that ratio. And then last thing to consider/ask was, I'm not sure if there was still concerns about the maximum height. I know there's a lot of discussion about the 15 feet at the midpoint and what's the pitch of the roof. And it seems like from the, you know, Morton building you're showing that you said it probably wouldn't be more than like around 20 feet-ish at the peak?
Yeah, we had run the numbers in the second zoning board of appeals meeting, estimating between 20 and 22 feet to the peak. That is with a, I think it's a 212 pitch on the roof, so it would be measured to the midpoint of that pitch.
And it sounded like there was general acceptance with that, right?
I think it helps to put a number on that. Speculation kind of, you know, scares everyone.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, any other questions before we have a motion? Seeing none, can, can we have a motion? Yes, Chandra.
I'll move ordinance number 2022-10-042, an ordinance approving a major variance. Woodward Garage at 2003 Airport Road, case number ZBA-2022-MAG-05, to council for approval on the consent agenda.
All right, thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Chair. Any discussion? Mary Alice.
Well, I concur with Grace. I appreciate the applicant's willingness to work with the public, their neighbors, and so forth. I'm a little torn on this one, and here's why. So one of the, one of the criteria is, will it do any basic harm to the neighborhood? And, and we've had this conversation about neighborhood and what that means. So we can define it either as the, what we commonly call neighborhood, so the people around them, or the neighborhood as the zoning ordinance says, which is R1. Right? So R1 is a neighborhood. If, if this was, 4,000 square feet's pretty big for R1, and I do think it actually alters the character of R1 if that's how we're going to define it. I appreciate all the work that everybody has done. I appreciate the fact that this is a really large lot, but those are my concerns. So at this time, I am not sure how I'm going to vote, but those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Any other discussion? I believe this is an ordinance, so we need a roll call vote? Oh, wait, sorry. Did somebody, Grace? Okay.
Yeah, I was just going to say to that, I agree some of those points. I think this is a hard one of, you know, community cohesion and being neighborly, and then also having the right to do what someone feels, you know, they need to do on their own property. And some of what I took away, too, from those ZBA meetings was the fact that this property just happens to be right in between the two subdivisions, but not a part of either one of them, I think. So just think that's also another piece to consider in that. I understand with the R1 in it of itself, but I think there was some talk about it not matching the subdivisions and that it's not part of either of those.
All right, Mary Alice?
I'm sorry, one more thing. I guess then I would ask, I would vote for it if it was moved off of the consent agenda just to give people one more chance to provide input.
All right, Chandra, would you allow the, the change to the motion?
What other input? From who?
Well, there's no neighbors here right now, so I guess I'm saying they have one chance left to say something. But you don't have to agree.
I mean, I don't think that I do. I think it...
That's fine.
All right, any further discussion? Mary Alice, could you take the chair for a moment?
Sure. The chair recognizes James.
Yeah, I do appreciate all the work that's gone into this, both from staff and from the applicant and from the zoning board of appeals. I, I'm going to, I, I will vote for this, and the reason why is I, I am uncomfortable with how this developed, how that lot was left in this kind of state that makes it very hard to use. I'm sure if it wanted to be broken up, you could have a shared drive, which nobody should ask for if they can avoid it, to have multiple lots in there, but otherwise, it's a really odd property. The fact that we let two different subdivisions be plotted, platted out on either side of it without, you know, the impact of what that would mean in the future, fully understood, I, I think puts the owner of that property in a very difficult spot, and I, I think this is an appropriate use. I, I, the only concern that I have is what happens when this owner sells to the next owner and what they believe they can do with that variance that may or may not carry through with the intent and the discussion that we've had tonight, but I do intend to support it. And I would be happy to take the chair back.
I relinquish the chair back to James.
All right, thank you. And so, Grace, you have one more comment.
Sorry, one more comment. Also, just wanted to clarify some of those discussions that I agree with that concern, but that it's not allowed for industrial uses and still has to follow all the noise ordinance and other city ordinances. So I think that if it does become a problem, then, you know, the neighbors have the right to, you know, report that, and they'll be held by other regulations outside of the construction of the physical building. So I just wanted to add that, too.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. And seeing no more, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Wu?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes. That motion passes. Moving on to resolution number 2022 dash 10 dash zero eight four R, a resolution accepting the equity and quality of life. Uh, projects recommended by the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, BPAC. And I think we're gonna welcome Bill Brown to the table. Our current, our current BPAC chair. Okay, go ahead.
I'm gonna introduce this and then, uh, John and Bill can take over. Um, first of all, I really appreciate Bill coming tonight. He's, um, the chair of BPAC and, and we've been working closely with BPAC on the equity quality of life program from the beginning. And, um, I just want to say that they, we, we went to BPAC no fewer than four times. And part of it was in the beginning establishing the criteria by which we would, um, try to organize the, the prioritization of the projects that were proposed to us. And so BPAC was very instrumental in that and we had a, a point system, which was really just, you know, you need something to kind of grab onto and, and help to rack and stack the, the projects. Um, and I, I may have explained this, I know I explained it at BPAC, but I think I've explained it here before. It's very heavily weighted towards the low and moderate income neighborhoods because that's where the target was supposed to be. So it, it would take a lot for a, a, a project that was proposed in another neighborhood that was not low to moderate income. To overcome that very high, uh, point allocation for, uh, look, that, that favored the low and mod locations. We got, um, I think it was 78 different submissions. Some had overlap, um, but most of them were unique. And with the help of, uh, Public Works, we did sort them into, uh, a couple of different categories before even applying the points. And so, um, we sorted them into, uh, whether or not they were eligible for starters, because if it was on private property, it was not eligible. If it was not in the city of Urbana, it was not eligible. And, um, there were a lot of operational things that were suggested and all those individual suggestions were passed on to Public Works. And some of them have already been dealt with and some of them are, are, um, you know, being, they're, they're being, they put in various buckets for various things. And one of the things that John will explain tonight is we, we have a series of projects that we're recommending to, to proceed, uh, to, to try and implement through the, the equal program. But then there's a handful of other things that really require further study, which we're proposing to continue on a, a sort of a separate journey of study. To see if maybe in another round, they could, they would, um, we would do implementation on that and those are largely around, um, complaints about speeding and wanting to have some traffic calming. So a lot of work generated from this whole effort, uh, all of which has been really good. And then, um, I worked with various, um, staff to apply the, the point system that we had created. And it was around, uh, physical safety, which had to do with, you know, were there accidents, whether those were vehicular accidents or pedestrian accidents, bicycle accidents. Personal safety, which focused on crime statistics for the various areas. Um, and those were done by basically, uh, you know, in intersection or if it was a block that someone had proposed, um, they were evaluated that way. Again, the points for the low and moderate income areas as according to the HUD maps. Um, whether there was a connectivity of, of that particular location, did it lead somewhere like a school or, or shopping or, or something? And, um, then finally we had one that, that didn't turn out to be relevant, were there any matching resources for any of the individual projects? So those all got, um, all the projects were rated and then we brought the, uh, you know, a short list to, um, BPAC for their, um, you know, questions, discussion, and, and we went through that a couple of different times. And so John's gonna, I think now, talk about some of the individual things that are being proposed. But that was just the overview from the effort that has gone into, into this to bring you to this point.
All right, thank you, Carol. Yeah, and so good evening, mayor and council. And, um, just to kind of dive into the, um, what is presented before you. Um, as you may recall from our capital improvement plan for this year, we have a $2 million budget, um, in fiscal year 23 for the EQL program. And what we propose, uh, with that is these 10 implementation projects that'd be part of our, um, you know, $2 million budget. And, um, kind of as, uh, additionally, we have five planning projects, which would not be in that $2 million like Carol alluded to, but would be, um, pursued with other funds. Um, so not really what you're voting on tonight, but wanted to kind of give you a full picture there. So, um, for the implementation projects, really what it came down to was, uh, sidewalk and streetlight improvements that we saw is pretty readily, um, readily available for us to jump into some design work and, uh, get construction going in 2023, uh, without too much delay. So that was, those are the ones that were really kind of, uh, low hanging fruit, ready to go. Um, and like Carol said, the traffic, uh, related issues, trying to find the appropriate solution for, um, trying to reduce some of the speeding concerns, um, it was one, we wanted to spend a little more time on before, um, you know, diving in with some implementation on that. Um, so, and, and Bill, feel free to step in if you wanted to kind of give some BPAC perspective on this.
Yeah, I'm, I'm mostly here to answer any questions you have about our role, um, as BPAC, but I did want to say that this was, uh, something that the BPAC members really enjoyed doing and there, we were glad that you would, um, ask us to participate in this process. I know that several members were excited, especially to, uh, look at some of these projects in different parts of town. Um, I think our biggest contribution or one of our biggest contributions was early on was, um, just helping provide input on like the communication plan. To get, get word out about how to apply and develop a simple application. I know there was some thought about requiring petitions and things and we, we wanted to make it simple to get the most, um, applications as possible and I think we were pretty successful in that. So, um, yeah, it was mostly just like providing informal input and then toward the end more, um, input about narrowing things down. Choice between doing, doing as much as you can on one area or, or kind of dividing it up and trying to cover more areas. So John will talk more about that, but I just, uh, did want to say thanks. And if you have any questions, um, about our role or, or our thoughts or, or why some particular segment might be more important or not, um, feel free to ask. Thanks.
All right. And so, um, in your packet, I have a couple of tables there for your information. Um, table one summarizes the implementation projects. And, uh, we kind of, we kept the, uh, submission number in there, EQL numbers, uh, submission number. I think those probably came in sequentially. Yeah, it came in sequentially. And, um, when you see some like 25B, that means some people provided multiple, um, suggestions. So we just kind of, uh, divided them up as we got them. Um, uh, priority score is, uh, what Carol and, and BPAC had, uh, developed there. And what we started with, we started with these 10 projects for implementation. Came up with a full budget of the way they were suggested, uh, from the submission. And it came to a, a budget of about two and a half million dollars. So it was $500,000 over our budget. That's really kind of where, you know, the rubber met the road. We worked it out with BPAC as to, do we cut out the lowest scoring projects? Or do we reduce scope in other air, in parts of some of the projects to get them all in there? And we went with the latter option of, uh, reducing the scope in some of the larger projects so we could touch on all 10 of these with this fiscal year. So. Um, of course, these are, uh, you know, preliminary budgetary estimates really based on length of street. How many side, is sidewalk on both sides or just one side? You know, a kind of an average spacing of streetlights. As we get into design, we'll have a better idea what the actual cost is, but it's a, you know, initial budgetary estimate intended to be conservative. So, um, that is, that is what we're hoping with here. And, uh, we do have design, um, beginning already on some of these. In fall 2002, we're ready to begin, I should say, fall 2022, with the hope that construction will start in 2023. So happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, thank you, John and Bill. Um, Chris?
Um, John, who's doing the construction work? Are these gonna be put out to bid or is this Public Works?
The, oh, the bit, the construction will be, um, put out for bid for contractors. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Chandra?
Um, the priority scores, what it, what was it out of?
We had set, uh, a, um, what do I want to say? Like a, oh, I, I hesitate to call it a system because that makes it sound like, uh, a really, um, technical. But there were points that you could get. It wasn't out of something. It was, you basically added up points. So you got, um, and I'm not sure I'm gonna be able to recreate the whole thing right now. But, um, I do re- recall that if you were in the low to mod income area, you got 30 points. And then, um, depending on, um, depending on whether there were crimes in the area, um, and what type of crimes in the area. I think you could get up to, if I remember, 15 points, perhaps it was 10. Um, same for the, um, physical safety and so on. Connectivity was a total of 10. So you basically just stacked up for as many things as were applicable to that particular location. You just added them up.
Okay.
I can get you the, the, the. Oh, okay, sorry. I didn't have that handy.
All right, thank you. Grace?
Thanks. Yeah, you pulling that up. I was wondering if we could also put up your tables, uh, for the public to see if you have those also.
Yeah, we'll do.
Thank you. Were you addressing that one or you jump in with more questions or do you want a second to, are you pulling up the thingy?
Yeah, I'll pull up the, uh, the packet where we can jump to the links too if we want to.
Sure, I have questions still, but I'll let me answer this one first if that's okay.
Page 40.
Okay.
Uh, thanks. Yes, thanks for pulling that up. Um, and so I want to say thank you to BPAC. I watched just the last two of these meetings. I didn't catch all four of them when you guys discussed this. You snuck by me. Um, but I want to say thank you again for BPAC. I think this is another great example of using the commissions to help do these things in council. And save us hours and hours of that pre-work and I really appreciate that. Um, especially even Bill walking around all those routes at night and, um, I really like the map in the link. Um, so I really appreciate that. And I agree with BPAC's decision in the most recent meeting to keep all of the projects and just reduce the scope, that option two choice. Um, especially with, just wanted to highlight and confirm, you're saying especially because those bottom three that got 30 points. Got all those points because they're in low to moderate income HUD qualified area, right? Um, and did you all say then that's like CDBG eligible because under HUD?
I, I think so. I'm trying to catch Sheila's eye. So, so in using that, that HUD map, every, uh, anything that, that got the 30 points, that's CDBG eligible, right?
The target area, I think.
And.
Could you repeat that, John? Cause she's not mic'd.
Oh, definitely. Um, Sheila was referring to the community development target areas that are on the county GIS map. Um, anything within those areas would be eligible for the CDBG money. And as we worked through this, as we were getting ready for the implementation, um, all but, uh, number 39, uh, was clearly eligible for, um, the CDBG funds.
Well, all except 39.
Y- yes, yes.
Okay, so the other one's still, um, some of those points in the other projects also came from the neighborhood need, low to moderate income areas, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, um, and also wanted to just highlight, um, reiterate slash ask any additional stuff on, there were some discussions about lighting standards for the city. Um, and if, was that, um, maybe planning on being done before this or in tandem with these lighting projects? Or is there kind of a guess on which order those go in?
We're not gonna hold these, um, projects up to wait for our, um, our street lighting standard development. We're, um, just now getting started with the asset management plan for street lighting, which is gonna, as part of that will be, um, helping us develop our standards. And so in the interim, as much as it pains it for me to say it, we will apply champagne's, uh, streetlight standards, which are, which are quite good, uh, but.
Yeah, it makes sense. Yeah, I don't think, I agree. We don't need to hold up any of these projects waiting for that, but just as it sounds like, keeping in mind, you know, if we have an idea of what we're going towards, don't install stuff that's completely different. Um, and I would ask us to consider some minimal lighting, minimal to be safe, um, and dark skies kind of discussions that got brought up. And, um, could consider even bringing this to the sustainability advisory commission too, if you want any help on lighting and light pollution and some of the best practices from LEED and other organizations about, um, safe and efficient outdoor lighting. I think that's all my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Alice?
Um, so I remember, I think Bill was on the council, that there was a speed study done on Broadway, I think by Craig. Um, there was some issues where people were driving 45 miles an hour in a 30 mile zone. Um, so you might want to look in some files and see if there's already been some work done on that. I don't know if it directly corresponds to the ones that you have here, but I was wondering if you could speak a little bit towards what, what are potential traffic calming items that you could do?
Sure. And I think Broadway Avenue makes, um, a great, and thank, thank you for bringing up the, uh, study in recent memory. And I'll be sure to verify what we have and how old that data is. Um, it, Broadway's a great example. It's a very wide road, um, that as it, you know, and has a kind of more of a rural cross section. So it, it gives you the feel of being able to drive fast like you're on a, a rural highway or something. And so opportunities could be, um, creating some narrowing at maybe some of the intersections. Um, you know, we have opportunities because there are, um, you know, it's Crystal Lake Park and other, uh, park district amenities on the west side. We have residential on the east side, um, and improving, you know, it can do maybe a couple of things, potentially improving pedestrian safety as trying to cross there. Um, it's that long stretch without any stop control or anything, as well as perhaps, uh, providing some, um, measures that narrow the road and make drivers want to slow down.
So we're gonna give it a road diet again? What did you call it last time? Was it a road diet? Is that right?
Right, yeah, yeah. Um, that term's usually, it's pretty much applied to when you take, say like a four lane section and reduce it to a two lane. And there are other, oh my gosh, there's so many fancy phrases for, we just have the Illinois Bike Summit this last week where, um, uh, engineer from the Chicago Department of Transportation came down and, and kind of shared a lot of their tricks they use with us. I don't remember all the phrases. There's, um, there's a lot of them, but yeah, I mean, basically ways that either you give like horizontal restrictions, you make the road narrower. Or you provide a speed bump of, of vertical deflections, they say. So, yeah, th- those would be some, some opportunities, I think, on Broadway. Some other, some other things that are kind of simple is if you were to take, if you had parking on the street, you could have parking on one side of the street, put it on the other side of the street in the next block. And then you make drivers have to think about it because they're kind of having to, um, do like that weaving maneuver instead of just straight shot.
Even the, the, uh, sign across from the middle school, it says your speed is the solar powered thing that when you, that's considered a traffic calming measure? Cause it gives you feedback about how fast you're going and what the speed limit is.
Like the one by VetMed?
Yep.
Yep. I don't like that one. Um, okay, so it's, it looks like a lot of these projects are, um, close to the middle school. And I, I mean, the most expensive one is, but of course you have high traffic there and it's certainly a possibility of, of pedestrian injuries. Um, was there any other consideration for the Feralon Village? Number 25B? Or any other thing? I mean, that's, it's $365,000. So it's a little above the budget. So what were the considerations, I guess? It's a better way of asking.
Um, well, the, uh, west, western side, uh, the part toward the west that comes out to the middle school crosses at the, uh, crosswalk there. And that's actually a safe route to school. If there were sidewalks continuing where they're proposed, there, there aren't any sidewalks once you get past Anderson, right? So it's from, by Anderson, there's sidewalks. This is proposed from Anderson to Cottage Grove. And I assume those would be come safe walk to school routes too. So that would be a consideration. It is, it's a major kind of, if you look at a map, um, kids that are, say, living in the Ambucks subdivision, so runs over kind of near Philo Road. over kind of near Philo Road, and going to middle school or even high school, would likely take that route. So it is kind of a major commuting route for school.
All right, thank you.
All right, any further questions? Chandra?
Um, it talks about a budget amendment coming forth. Is that just for like transferring of the funds, or what would that budget amendment be for? Because I thought that it was already sort of like allocated in, in the budget.
Yeah, and that budget amendment that I refer to is for the planning projects which are not going to be funded out of that two million dollar EQL budget this year. It will come from other, other funds, such as CDBG or the CRNI fund.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Grace?
Thanks, I forgot one. I was wondering if we could request the list of all proposals. Obviously not right now, but if you already had that compiled for BPAC anyway, I agree that that's a good idea to kind of keep those on hand for future stuff. And I'd be curious to just see what we got in. So could we have a list of all of them?
I can give you the, the actual raw sheets that people sent in.
Yeah, that'd be great if that's the best way you have it. I wasn't sure what was in the Excel sheet you guys were looking at in one of those, if those were compiled, but yeah, whatever format you think is best.
I'd rather give you that, because I did abbreviations when I put them in the spreadsheet, so I'd rather that you read what people actually wrote, rather than my characterization of what they wrote.
Okay, great. I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
All right. Jia?
Thank you. And thank you all for all your hard work on this. I was just hoping you could talk a little bit more about the function of the priority scores though. So I think the, the projects that have been identified for implementation, definitely much needed work, and I see there's more of that focus on sidewalks and street lighting, where some of the planning projects have more of a traffic calming focus, but they, some of them have higher priority scores. So can you just talk a little bit about that?
I, I, I'll try, and then John can join in. We were really interested in things that we could implement sooner as opposed to later. So the reason why we didn't just do away with the projects that required more planning is because they did have scores that warranted further study, but they weren't ready for implementation. They need that additional work. And, and sometimes people, I mean, w- we got, people would say, it is a, it is a stepwise analysis, because people would say, oh, they're speeding on my street, so the first thing is to verify. People have different perceptions about speeding. So is that according to, you know, what, what we consider speeding, that the first step is, do we consider that there is a speeding problem? Do we agree? If, and then the next step is to, what are the options for traffic calming if there is indeed a speeding problem? We were really interested, it, you know, it's taken a long enough time as it is to, to get to this point, and we wanted things that we could move out on implementation, and that's why we're already sort of bringing this next phase in behind with planning. So we didn't want to leave those behind, but, but we wanted to get some money out the door, because there is ample need for, for the two million dollars already.
So, just to clarify, are there projects that did score higher like these that are not included in either of these two categories then?
I don't think so. No, I don't think so.
Not that I was aware of, no?
No, I don't think so.
Thank you.
I will say that I submit several projects on my own, just as part of the public, and I did see one or two of them get, out of the eleven I submitted, one or two of them made it through. The, the ones that didn't were mostly things that I knew required right-of-way acquisition, or in one case, is a safety issue on North Lincoln that probably would have scored pretty high if it had gotten through to the scoring, but it was, it's actually going to be handled by a different grant process. Safe, safe routes for, or safe roads for all, what's it called?
Yeah, safe streets for all.
Safe streets for all. So I think you guys already approved a grant application for that. So there are a few things like that that have big safety impacts that didn't, that are being handled in a different way. The North Lincoln one, and then the one you just approved the application for on Florida Avenue, didn't score as well because it's not in a low, low-income area, although it does connect low-income people to potential work and things like that. But that's a really expensive one that would take a different grant.
Thank you.
All right, Grace?
Sorry, I thought of more. You know, if you have a sense, and I can also wait and read through all the things, but seems like, you know, these focused on the streets, street lighting, sidewalks and things. I was wondering if there were a considerable amount of proposals that didn't fit in there. Like, I think we kind of expected that there would be some requests for like sewer repairs, for maybe new grocery store affordable housing development. I didn't know if you got some of those proposals that you could think of, and kind of going this route on sidewalks and lights?
I can scan through, I would say the vast majority of them were sidewalk, streetlights. Some just streets, people, you know, they, they, the quality of the, their street itself. There was a lot about speeding and traffic calming. We did get one from Dr. Ellis about sewers. We had one proposal, someone had proposed that we install the public emergency blue light towers like the U of I has on campus. That's, that's really it. The vast, vast majority were streetlights, sidewalks, traffic calming.
Okay, thank you. And with, since you mentioned the Dr. Ellis neighborhood, I think that there are conversations going on about that, right? I know it's not this topic, but there, yes, conversations, or confirmation that there are conversations going on about that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Mary Alice, question or motion?
Motion.
All right.
All right. I move resolution number twenty-two-two-two-ten-zero-eight-four-R, resolution accepting the equity and quality of life, EQL projects recommended by the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, BPAC, to the consent agenda, to City Council.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jia, for the second. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think, let's see, next up, we have resolution number twenty-two-two-dash-ten-dash-zero-eight-five-R, a resolution authorizing an extension of time for a temporary or experimental travel, traffic regulation, one-way westbound traffic on Fairview Avenue from Harvey Street to Goodwin Avenue. And I think Bill got to go, but John has to stay and talk to us about this one.
That's right. Thank you, James. Okay, so Urbana School District number one-sixteen approached Public Works this past summer because they had been experiencing some issues with the pickup and drop-off traffic patterns around Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Elementary School. And they had a new plan that they wanted to kind of vet through us and work it out before the school year started. So we met with the school district and kind of worked through some options, did what engineers drew, we do, and we drew some stuff up, and kind of ran it by the MTD and the first responders, just to kind of get some input as well. And was able to basically come up with what this diagram explains, where bus drop-off will be on this private dri, is on this private drive along North Goodwin Avenue there. And then the students get picked up and dropped off by their families along Fairview Avenue. And what happens along Fairview Avenue is the school staff will come out with barricades and signs to make Fairview Avenue a one-way street westbound, just during that approximately thirty-minute pickup and drop-off period. And so, you know, important part of this is the, you know, school staff being there to kind of manage things. And the educational part that the school district did with the families of the students seemed to have been really effective, from what I have seen. So that is, that was the general, you know, purpose of this. And the reason I'm bringing it to you is because when we discussed it in the Traffic Commission back in August, we, we agreed to move this forward as a ninety-day experimental traffic regulation, making Fairview Avenue one-way during those pickup and drop-off periods. And so that, you know, ninety day would only bring us to sometime in the middle of November. So if we were to continue this, which the Traffic Commission would, you know, came to the consensus, this would be a good thing to continue for the rest of the school year. We would need City Council authorization to do so. I'd say I did come by, oh, one Tuesday afternoon to watch the pickup period, and I can say it just went very smoothly. The assistant principal and other staff were out there directing traffic, and, you know, parents and other family members doing the pickup. Very orderly, only a few cars would come along and go down the street the wrong, the wrong way, but, you know, really pretty well, good compliance. The, you know, the, the one concerns that we had had was like, you know, would the queues, the lines forming on Fairview back up to Harvey Street, the next, or Gregory Street, the next ones. And it didn't block up those streets too much. Traffic was still able to flow and detour around, so seemed to be working pretty well. The, what we would want to see is before the next school year starts, is for there to be more of a formal plan, kind of a written plan, developed by the school district and presented to us, so it can kind of be memorialized as, you know, here is the traffic plan for Dr. Martin Luther King Elementary. And along with that, Public Works would be providing some additional signage to kind of help, especially make sense of the intersection at Bezlin, Goodwin, Fairview, Goodwin, that offset intersection over there, so that when there are drop-off periods, and it's a do-not-enter-on-Fairview-Avenue, we can have some basically folding down signs that, you know, explain like, don't turn here, that then can be put back up and locked by school staff, as kind of a way to do that. Yeah. That's kind of the gist of it. So this is a resolution, and again, would just give us authorization to continue this experimental traffic regulation. Are there any questions?
All right, thank you. Questions? Sharice?
I just have one. Well, maybe two. So this change, when you turn Fairview into one-way, is it two lanes or just one lane? Because I've seen the barricades, this is the thing. I always like skip that whole area when I'm going someplace at that time of the day, because going, having not done that before, it's like there was traffic going down Bezlin, there was traffic going down Fairview, people lined up all around the corner off of Goodwin. And so now that's what I'm, I'm wondering. It's like, is it, when, when you're making it one-way, is it two lanes on Fairview? Now, I, because I happened to be at King, at King School the other day when they were dismissing kids. And I know they have the buses, where they have the buses, and then they have the teachers that supervise the kids that are going cars up front. And that's it?
Yeah, and, and really, they just, there is no traffic going on that eastbound lane.
Okay.
They've, it, it's, in a sense, it's not just a one-way traffic. It's, it's really closed to through traffic, is really what it is too.
Okay.
And, yeah, and even the bus route on that street is, is been detoured during those times by MTD.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I know we have another resolution coming up with the Fairview and Harvey thing. So this, does this work in concert in some way with, in tandem with the fair, the other street, the changing of the, where you have no parking on the one side?
I think it does. It really, the, the following ordinance that will come after this, that we'll consider, discuss, because probably most detour traffic, if they're not expecting this, are going to probably run down Harvey Street to get around this area, if they're heading west on Fairview Avenue, for example. Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. I just wanted to get some clarification.
All right, any further questions? Sharice?
And this will only be going on during the school year, even if we keep it permanent?
Correct. It really relies on the school staff actually implementing it. So there would not be any permanent signs up. They would all be either temporary barricades to be taken out, or like I'm saying, like this folding signs that would have to be unlocked and opened and then put back, so.
Okay, so my other question is that they have summer school, and so are you just going to have the north, the, the northbound lane of Goodwin, you know, where, where they have the little bus bay there? Would, are, are, would the school be required to figure that out, or how, how would that work then?
That's a good question. Well, I don't know about summer school, because I don't know what times they'd be doing. My only, my only concern would be is if there would be MTD bus routes running around that time. But so far, the way it's being implemented and the way I'd want it permanently implemented would be not to be tied to specific times of day, just say if they have early dismissals or things like that. I want it to be able to be when they have it. Again, assuming it's not in conflict with the MTD routes, but.
Okay. All right, thanks.
All right. Any other questions? Can I have a motion? Mary Alice?
Can I make a motion? All right. I will move resolution number twenty-two-two-ten-zero-eight-oh, sorry, zero-eight-five-R, resolution authorizing an extension of time for a temporary or experimental traffic regulation, one-way westbound traffic on Fairview Avenue from Harvey Street to Goodwin Avenue, to the consent agenda on City Council.
A second.
Thank you, Sharice, for the second. Any further discussion? Mary Alice?
I just want to say that this is, the, the structure that you've proposed here is what we use at LEO, and it works very well. And generally speaking, you have people who, who stop to pick up their kids on the right-hand side of the road, and then when you pull out, you use that, that left lane to get out. But it's been used there for, I don't know, fifteen, twenty years. So, anyway.
It's Grace.
Thanks for this proposal. It seems to make sense to me and fit the needs of the school, and if they're willing to do the signs and direct traffic and stuff, I think that makes sense. I'll be curious to see how this goes, because it's kind of experimental, right? So until beginning of June, and then I imagine there'll be more conversations on what to do next, right?
Correct.
Right, maybe not questions, sorry.
Correct.
But thank you. So I think it makes sense. My only concern would be if someone happened to go down while it was a one-way on accident, and then not knowing some other time of day, and they're thinking both lanes are one direction or something. So I think it makes sense to do it, you know, when needed. But I think that we can see how it goes, and there might be also some ways it would make sense to have it permanently, just so that people know it's a one-way all the time, instead of sometimes. So I'm in support of this, and I'm curious to see how it goes, and hope that it goes well for the school drop-off operations.
Any other discussion? Mary Alice, would you take the chair for a moment?
Sure. And the chair recognizes James.
Yeah, I would, I believe this works well on Anderson in front of Wiley School, and I think it works on Michigan Avenue for the middle school during peak times in the afternoon. And so I think this, this experiment should keep going. Thanks.
All right. And I relinquish the chair back to James.
Thank you, Mary Alice. Any other comments? Seeing no other comments, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Next, we will go on to ordinance number twenty-two-two-dash-ten-dash-zero-four-three, an ordinance amending Schedule J of Section twenty-three-dash-one-eighty-three of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets, Harvey Street. And John will tell us about this one too.
I will, thanks. Let's plant myself here. We were busy in Traffic Commission the last few months, and so just wanted to bring, you know, show off to you guys what we do. But, no, this was, you know, and I, I don't know if there was something orchestrating this behind the scenes, but coincidentally, we had both this concern about parking on Harvey Street and the Fair, the Fairview Avenue. Traffic pattern come, you know, at the same meeting, I suppose probably because it was people thinking about the school year starting up again. A resident on Harvey Street just concerned about when there's cars parked on both sides of this narrow street, as cars trying to get around that school pickup and drop-off traffic or weaving around, you know, and they're in a detour, so they're trying to kind of get out of there. Concerned about not seeing students as they're commuting to and from school, up and down the street. So, you know, took a look at it. I mean, this is, this is another example of it's a narrow street, it's less than thirty feet wide, and so just by that narrowness, you know, we can take away parking on one side, you know, especially if there seems to be a reason, like the se- you know, especially if there seems to be a reason, like it seemed like a good, a good reason here is we, you know, are definitely using Harvey Street as a bit of a detour around the school. So, deal discussed at Traffic Commission and decided to put the no parking restriction on the east side based on the kind of general, more residential parking on the west side from our observations. And so, you know, as the way our traffic code is set up, there is amendment, or this requires an amendment. So it's Schedule J of the traffic code that lists out all the on-street parking restrictions. And we'd ask that this one be added on Harvey Street from Church up to Fairview Avenue on the east side of the street. Any questions?
All right, questions? Chandra?
So I know we discussed in Traffic Commission about notifying the residents. Has, has anyone given any input?
No, they haven't. I delivered door hangers to residents last week. It was, I believe it was Wednesday or Thursday of last, no, it was earlier than that, I'm sorry. It was like Tuesday of last week. And we have not received any calls or any emails about that.
Okay.
And I, I should, and Chandra, I'm sorry, I failed to mention that because we wanted this to be implemented by the time school year started, this actually has been in effect as a temporary regulation since August. So not only did we have the door hangers, it has been in effect. And so, no, we also have not received any feedback from that either.
All right, thank you, Chandra. Charisse?
Well, I had the occasion of speaking with Mr. Johnson yesterday, as a matter of fact. He's quite happy with the arrangement, the way it's going. I asked, I actually asked how he felt about how it was going. And he felt that the, that the traffic issue for, because he also was the one made the request. He felt that from what he had seen so far, it was going fine. And he, he, for himself at least, he said he didn't have a problem with it being made permanent if that was, if that was the case. So I just could tell you that, Chandra, you know, that much.
All right, thank you, Charisse. Any other questions? I would entertain a motion then, Chandra?
I'd like to. No, go ahead.
I'll move ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash one zero dash zero four three. An ordinance amending Schedule J of Section two-three dash one-eight-three of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets, Harvey Street, to City Council with recommendation for approval on the consent agenda.
A second.
Thank you, moved by Chandra, seconded by Charisse. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes. That passes unanimously. Next up, we have ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash ten dash zero four four. An ordinance amending Schedule O dash one of Section twenty-three dash two oh one of the Urbana Local Traffic Code designating load restrictions upon vehicles using certain highways. And that would be Kohler Avenue over Boneyard Creek and Washington Street over Sunny Estates Ditch. And John, you're up again.
Last one tonight, I promise. And I apologize, this is a bit of a snoozer. I'm sure Sheila will have something more interesting after this. But this is, to me, really just trying to keep things in order. We, in our traffic code, do illustrate how the city has authority to enforce weight restrictions or size restrictions on our streets. And as you read the ordinance, you see it refers to a schedule. Well, there is no schedule, so we don't currently have anything listed. But the fact of the matter is that there are two locations within the city of Urbana that have specific weight restrictions at these two bridges. These have been, you know, these have been in effect for a little while now, at least a few years. And in practice, the way it really just comes about is that any oversized overweight permits that come through DOT process, we'll go them into my inbox and I'll review them just to make sure they're not passing over these locations. Fairly informal process at this point. But what I'd like to do is to be able to have this schedule current so that, you know, as, kind of get more refined with this process, I can just point, you know, people who are moving oversized loads to, to this schedule and say, look, just stay away from these things in general. And so that's, that's kind of what we're aiming at here. So essentially creating this Schedule O one that is cited, but doesn't really exist yet. And then just listing the, the two locations and the, the weight restrictions. These, and these weight restrictions were determined by the Department of Transportation's Bureau of Bridges and Structures when they did load ratings of the bridges within, you know, recent years, so. And, you know, as we've talked about before in the capital improvement planning, this Washington Street one is kind of the, the main, you know, problem for us because it has caused MTD route staff to be detoured around it, which is why, of course, we're working to get it replaced, so. Any questions?
Thank you. Do, do we have any questions? You just answered mine, I was going to ask about the MTD buses. Any other questions? Charisse?
I do wonder if, if there, if there is an illegal load going over, how does one know? And, and if one knows, how does one enforce whatever penalties, fees, or jail time, I don't know? How is that enforced?
That is an excellent question. And we don't have a foolproof way to enforce it. The good news is that because the state DOT is more, has a more rigorous system of enforcement of their, their weights, you know, with most oversized overweight loads are crossing on state routes or interstate routes and whatnot. And so they need a permit to be able to make those movements. And they will be found out by, you know, scales and things like that by the DOT. So if we're talking about overweight permits or overweight loads just within the city of Urbana, we do not have a system for catching that right now.
Okay. And if we did have a system, we wouldn't have a way to enforce it.
I'd have to learn more about it, I apologize, I don't know.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Chandra?
How do you inform of like the new, like new legal loads or the twelve ton weight limit? How do you inform the truckers, I guess? Or do you inform DOT and they like, they write it down somewhere? And all the truckers know to look at this if this is on their route, right?
Mm-hmm.
I assume?
Right, right. The, the Kohler Avenue Bridge is in the DOT's database. The Washington Street Bridge is, is small enough that it's not in their database. So that'd just be just kind of for us to keep track of. Currently, the, the best, you know, method I have is for really just reviewing the movements that they are proposing in the permit, because all the permits will come with a, a route defined. And so then I can just see what their route is and make sure it's not crossing one of these. But, yeah, I, I think that would be a, a really good opportunity for us, like as we develop our GIS maps and, and public facing maps, to be able to have this, you know, more communication, you know, easily communicated of these are weight restrictions in the city of Urbana, yeah.
Like for the Washington Street one, is, would there be a sign that says twelve ton weight limit?
Oh, yes, yes, of course.
Okay.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you.
All right, Grace?
Thanks. That was definitely one of my questions about the signage. I think that's helpful when they get off route for some reason. You know, there could be, a road closed and they have to go some other way. And a sign, I think is definitely helpful. Do you just explain a little bit more about what it means to add them to the schedule? Does that mean that they get like inspected annually? Or, I guess I'm not sure what adding these to the schedule means.
Yeah, sure, sure. Schedule in the sense of like a list. It's, they're on the list of locations in Urbana that have a weight restriction. And then we'll, so it'll be a part of our ordinance, you know, as, as like a schedule, as a list in the same way that like our parking restrictions. And I think there's a couple of width restriction locations as well. So, yeah, just, just a fancy phrase for a list, I guess. But they, yeah, there are, we are, we do inspect these every two years, for sure.
Okay, and another quick one, too, was the Kohler Avenue one. Says the weight limit's just legal loads only. But like, is there a quantifiable weight, like for the sign, you know, like?
Yeah, yeah, and that one, that actually is in, by the National Bridge Inspection Standards. They don't get posted for legal loads only, like with a sign or something. Because if, what's supposed to happen is if somebody has above legal loads, they're supposed to be getting permits to make those movements anyway. And so then those, those overweight loads would be getting reviewed by, like, bridge managers, for example. And I know it's really like too much information, but there's this like four-page document that the DOT has that explains what a legal load is. Unfortunately, it's not just a number. It was like, it's like, all these different configurations, but.
Yeah, I think just the practical question is as far as signage for that bridge. Like what, what or does a sign say there?
There are no signs.
There won't be one on that either. Okay, I think just maybe something to consider if there is a oversized load that gets rerouted somewhere and to know that this bridge can't hold them.
Yeah, it's, that's a tough one, because there are, and then there are other bridges that don't have this, you know, weight restriction. There still could potentially be an oversized load that wouldn't work for it, if that makes sense, like. So anytime they have an over, oversized load, they really need to be getting, doing the right steps. But like, like Charisse pointed to, I, I, I won't know unless the bridge gets damaged by it, unfortunately.
Yeah, it's because it is hard if there's something blocking it. Going down Yale Street and a semi is taking all these side residential streets and going the wrong way down one ways. And, you know, you can tell they got off their main route and then were totally lost trying to navigate a semi truck through the middle of downtown. So I think just some things to consider, whatever signage we can do.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Charisse?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash ten, one zero dash zero four four. An ordinance amending Schedule O one of Section twenty-three dash two oh one of Urbana Local Traffic Code designating load restrictions upon vehicles using certain highways, Kohler Avenue over Boneyard Creek, Washington Street over Sunny Estates Ditch. Be moved to consent agenda for City Council for approval.
Second.
Thank you. Was that you, Mary Alice, that seconded, thank you? All right, discussion. Seeing no discussion, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes. That motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash ten dash zero eight three R. A resolution approving a certain intergovernmental agreement between the city of Urbana and the city of Champaign Housing and Homeless Innovation Consolidation Application.
Good evening, while we're waiting for Braden to load up the PowerPoint. I just want to introduce the city of Champaign staff that is here. There was a committee of Chandra, Jennifer Carlson, Janelle Gomez, and Betsy Barclay, as well as Braden and I, that worked on coming up with this IGA and the housing and innovation consolidated application process. So all of the group met weekly, sometimes more than that, over the last month or two, trying to come up with a consolidated application and scoring process. Both cities have pots of money that equals to a little over five million dollars to assist in providing affordable housing, homeless prevention, and related services. We discussed the, the process because we felt like it would be a better use for the community and better customer service if we had this one application portal rather than expecting different agencies to apply to Urbana for one thing and Champaign for another, where if they just provided application with their particular program, then we could look at the application and decide which was the better pot of money, because it can get very confusing with all of the different federal regulations. We will be doing the application submission through our neighborly portal, which is the same portal that we use for our consolidated social service funding applications. So this is our suggested timeline. Applications will open once the city of Champaign and city of Urbana approve the timeline. We'll have an information session where we actually invite the potential applicants. And then we will record that and keep it online so that it's available for people to go back and review. We'll close the applications on Monday, December twelfth, so that we can have an opportunity to evaluate them that week. And then we'll be bringing recommendations for the applications that will be funded by the city of Urbana to council on January seventeenth. City of Champaign will be taking their recommended proposals to their council on January twenty-fourth. And then we'll bring back agreements for final council approval in February and March. So we currently have these meetings scheduled on Friday, November fourth. They'll be at the Champaign City Council chambers from ten to eleven-thirty. And then we'll have a follow-up meeting on November twenty-eighth prior to the applications closing, so that people have questions or they want, you know, confused about the portal or any, anything, that we'll be there to answer questions before the final applications close. So this is an outline of our current funding. All of this funding is secured except for the Urbana ARPA funding, which we will be putting in an application through that process. And since these close after, hopefully those funding decisions are made, we'll know whether we have that funding available. But city of Champaign has general funds, Champaign is providing CDBG funding. We have two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in home funds for TBRA and then our ARP, home ARP funding. So the eligible projects for supportive services, affordable housing development, non-congregate shelter rehabilitation or development, TBRA are, are some of the housing gaps that are out there. So these are some of the eligible populations, chronically homeless. Homeless is people who are literally homeless or at imminent risk of homelessness or fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence. And these will serve everyone who is eligible. They have to be low to moderate income persons. Another scoring criteria would be that these meet the Urbana and Champaign council goals. We would look at the capacity and relevant experience of the applicants. You know, again, that's really because of the, the complexity of the funding sources. We really want to see commitment and collaborate, to collaborate. We feel like, you know, there's a lot of really good agencies in town, but if they can collaborate and come together, we can really provide some really great services to the community. We're also going to look at project readiness and clearly define goals and accomplishments. You know, how are they going to address the things that they, they say in their application they're going to address? And then we're also going to look where there's gaps in the community. It's a quick overview. Does anybody have any questions?
Mary Alice?
Thank you very much for working on this. I think it makes a lot of sense. I think my, my basic question is, we've got basically two pots of money, because we have two cities here. And there, of course, are going to be some things that cross boundaries. So how is the decision going to be made in terms of whether or not these, what percentage comes from Champaign? What percentage comes from Urbana? That's my big question.
Right. Yeah, and we're hoping it's clearly defined, because most of this money, it isn't a boundary that we're looking at. Like, most of our funding, it has to be in Urbana or it has to be in Champaign. But some of this, like TBRA can be countywide. And then Champaign's CDBG funding will be used to support any agencies that want to implement the TBRA program. So we may come back to you with applications, recommendations for an application that has some Champaign money and some Urbana money in it. Or there'll be some that are just clearly a better fit for the home ARP funding or a better fit for Champaign's general fund. So I think we're kind of hoping it'll just kind of flush itself out. But that'll be what we bring back to you once the applications close with our funding recommendations.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Yes, Chris?
Sheila, who is going to be the scoring team?
You're looking at them, Champaign and Urbana.
Oh, this is it, right here?
Yep.
You, you five?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you. Grace.
Uh, thanks for bringing this proposal, I think it's great innovation to work together, I think that definitely makes sense, especially with the overlap in populations in the community, so I definitely appreciate bringing this together. I think the sources of funding are great to pool together this way, um, some of my questions were about, um, sorry, reading my notes here, uh, if we could contribute, so I'm trying to understand, uh, Urbana CDBG stuff you said can't be in here because we're already at the fifteen percent for social services. Are there any, um, or would it be possible to have some CDBG funds, but they go towards qualified projects, if there were some qualified projects that say was in a low-income area for uh, renovating or building a shelter, could some of our CDBG funds go to any eligible projects in this area?
Potentially, uh, you know, we'd have to see what we get and then we'd also have to see, of course, with the, the news last week, we are getting lots of people approaching us with ideas on how we can spend the money, and I think part of the misunderstanding is that we have projects, you know, some of them being the equal projects that we, we are hoping to commit and spend the money on. Um, the timeliness question and the flexibility that we asked for was, in case we have a bad winter and we can't do those projects, then we have an opportunity to continue to spend the money. So we'll keep that in mind as we look at the applications and we'll continue to monitor where we're at with our timeliness test with the CDBG funding, so it could be that we bring something back, but at this time, we did not have plans uh, to do that.
Thank you.
Further questions? I would ask for a motion, Chandra.
I'll move Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash one zero dash zero eight three R, a resolution approving a certain intergovernmental agreement between the City of Urbana and the City of Champaign Housing and Homeless Innovation Consolidated Application to uh, City Council with recommendation for approval on the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, thank you for the motion, Chandra, and the second, Sharice, discussion. Chandra.
I, I just want to commend the group for uh, working together and coming up with this very easy uh, process or for the applicant, it will be easy for the applicant to um, sign up online or via paper and it's you know, a very good collaboration between the cities on uh, focusing on a problem that affects both cities, so I just appreciate being welcomed into the meetings as well to be able to provide my input in, so just thank you for this.
Thank you, Chandra, any other discussion? Uh, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion passes unanimously. And uh, now we are moving on to old business.
Was this, this was, this last one was on consent agenda, right?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to try to keep track.
Hello. Okay, under old.
Oh, sorry.
Under old business, we have Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash ten dash zero seven nine R, a resolution amending the City of Urbana and Urbana Home Consortium Consolidated Plan for fiscal year twenty twenty through twenty twenty-four and annual action plan for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Brayden.
Good evening, everyone, um, so before you tonight is uh, the resolution, um, amending the City of Urbana and Urbana Home Consortium Consolidated Plan for twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-four and annual action plan for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Um, we brought this to you originally at the October third meeting of com- of Committee of the Whole, and then we brought it to you as well last week on October tenth to City Council. Um, at that meeting, uh, we received, uh, staff received direction from council to um, revise the um, the resolution to add clarifying language to specify how the CDBG funds uh, will be used, or more accurately, um, to place restrictions on, on um, what the funds can be used for, just to provide clarification. So that's what is before you tonight, um, on the second page of the resolution, under Section Two, language has been added stating that CDBG funds, um, that no CDBG funds shall be expended on hard construction costs for any fire station, including demolition, excavation, site preparation, or vertical construction during the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Annual Action Plan Year uh, and prior to April first, twenty twenty-three. This, uh, amending the resolution in this way allowed us to um, keep in place the public input period that we had, we didn't need to redo that since um, the amendment itself is not changing, we just added that clarifying language in the resolution, so um, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, thank you, Brayden, any questions? Chandra.
Why, why the um, the date on the April first date?
I think that's the guidance we gave them at the meeting, as far as.
I didn't think.
It was for this particular year.
Okay. I didn't recall that, but.
All right, thank you, um. Uh, Sharice?
I'd like to move for Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash ten dash zero seven nine R, resolution amending the City of Urbana and Urbana Home Consortium Consolidated Plan for fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four and annual action plan for fiscal year twenty twenty-two dash slash twenty twenty-three, be moved to City Council for approval.
Thank you, Sharice.
Second.
Second by Mary Alice, discussion. Chris.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to amend Section Two of the resolution to exchange the date from April first, twenty twenty-three to April first, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for an amendment, um, Chris, can you speak to your amendment?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that uh, CDBG funds do not go toward uh, fire con- station construction. And so I want to extend the date to make sure that doesn't, that, that doesn't happen.
All right, I, I believe Sheila may have something to say about that amendment before we introduce other council questions or discussion.
Sure, when we bring our annual action plan for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, if we propose for uh, fire department expenditures at that time, you can vote on it then, so that's why we kind of put this dead date for this fiscal year, because it'll be addressed in future years. And, and like I said, we, at this time, we don't have any thoughts on utilizing the money there, um, but you, you never know what can happen in a few months.
Let me just understand what you're saying, Sheila, you're saying that if you're, uh, if this proposal like this year for fire stations with CDBG money were to happen, again, it would have to come to us.
Right, as part of our annual action plan, yep, yep.
All right, now that, now that we're introducing, I think the first person I saw was Sharice and then Mary Alice, and then we'll go to Grace.
Okay. This is like the third or fourth time we've talked about this. And this is like the third or fourth time that they've had to say, this isn't about fire stations, it's about what the label is or what the category is and what HUD says, that's what it is. So it's not about fire stations, it's about, it's about capital improvement. It's about us being able to keep this money instead of the money being, you know, us not doing anything with it or not doing anything with it in time. And they're trying to move the money, it's not about fire stations. So there's not going to be any construction, because we don't do construction in the wintertime, I don't know anybody that does. So there's not going to be any construction of anything. And you can't do a whole lot of construction with six hundred something thousand dollars or eight hundred something thousand dollars, that'd be maybe enough to lay a foundation and it'd be it. So all I'm saying is that I'd like to just go on and, and I think we should move past the um, the language as far as the HUD housing language, because it's not about any of that. The HUD housing language, this is my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is community development needs, capital improvement projects, fire station. And that's what their label is, just like if you had, you know, category apples, category oranges, and we can't just say, oh, we would like to change that to grapes and grapefruits. It, it's just, that's what HUD's thing is, am I correct or am I wrong?
Well, I, I would remind council members that currently we are discussing the amendment of the date.
And I just want to get this, I want to move this on so that we can move on and get business taken care of. Am I right or am I wrong?
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right, Mary Alice was next.
All right, well, Sheila just kind of stole my thunder, because I was just going to say, look, we know, we have to approve the next year's budget, we're just talking about this here. I think if we put this in here right now and we say, then we cut off all possible future conversations that we might have. Um, and I, I, I am against this amendment, um, we already have opportunities for the next couple of years, each year, we have to get, it comes to City Council for approval, every single year when we spend these dollars. So I, I just think it's completely unnecessary and I'm not voting for the amendment.
Thank you, Mary Alice, Grace.
Thank you, uh, thanks for the continued discussion to everyone, um, so I just want to, I guess we're not asking questions? Okay, so.
The, the, the motion on the floor right now, under discussion, is the amendment to change the date to, from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four.
Okay, so my comments on that are, um, I understand what Sheila's saying with the point of next year we'll have the annual action plan and can decide that. What I think this is important is because the consolidated consortium plan is from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four. So I think that um, that, that is a thing here that's not covered, is that this uh, the way it's written kind of leaves it open that between April twenty twenty-three and the end of the plan in twenty twenty-four, that these funds could be used for fire station construction out of that. Um, so I think that for that reason, it maybe makes more sense to just have the language of um, not using funds from the annual action plan twenty twenty-three or the consolidated plan through twenty twenty-four. Because we can't quite determine next year's annual action plan, but the consolidated plan does continue for that time period, right?
Yeah, and the consolidated plan, this is really just adding the category, it's not adding any funding. So we would bring those funding decisions to you each year as part of our annual action plan. But if it's not in our consolidated plan, we can't bring a funding proposal to you, so, you know, like we talked last week, you know, it, it might be that we need to buy equipment, it might, you know, it, there could be a variety of things that we use it for, but not the actual construction, um, but those type of things will come to you as part of the annual action plan. The consolidated plan, it just adds that category.
Yes, um, and it sounds like what you were saying, that we didn't need to do another public input hearing because this amendment hasn't changed, it just got pushed back, so it seems to me that in the same case, if this weren't to pass now, that we already had the public hearing on it, if there were a fire project that was eligible, that this could be brought back without another public hearing process if it's the same amendment. And my thoughts here is that the capital improvement projects are already included in these plans. We're only adding eligibility for fire activities, no matter what the words are saying, they're already in there. And I do have concerns because we can say that they're not going to be used for fire station construction, um, but I just have concerns that we got a survey from Public Works asking how we feel about using CDBG funds for fire station construction beyond the essential, so I just don't see how those things quite line up, and those are some of my concerns, because I think it's important that these funds go where they seem to be intended in low to moderate income areas that can have the most impact in service.
Do you have discussion about the amendment, Grace?
Um, I thought we were having a discussion.
Well, gee, I didn't hear anything about, about the, the change of the date.
I said April first, twenty twenty-four.
Right, but
Oh, I'm.
I was asking for Grace's discussion on, on that particular thing, which is what we're going to vote on shortly, um.
Yes, thank you, I just gave it.
Okay. All right, any further discussion on the amendment? Okay, for the, we're voting on an amendment to change the date from uh, this covering through April first, twenty twenty-three to April first, twenty twenty-four, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please, on the amendment.
Ms. Wu?
No.
Ms. Hersi?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
No. That motion uh, passed, the amendment passed, so now the main motion is under discussion with the updated date through April first, twenty twenty-four. Ms. Hersi.
Okay, and now, since we've got this amendment, um, Ms. Dodd, could you please tell me how that may change things regarding the monies going toward the what we're doing? Will that change anything?
If the language in Section Two stays the same, that says that we cannot use it for hard construction cost, then I, I'm hoping it doesn't impact it, but if it, if it does, we will, we'll address that when we bring the annual action plan um, to you for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year and, and ask it to be amended at that time and show our reasons. You know, we will be coming back to you in February to give an update on where we are with the timing of spending of the funds and any, you know, suggestions, if, if we're still running against this wall, we might bring suggestions at that time too.
Okay, another question I have, if, if, if we don't do something incredibly stupid like actually vote against this and lose all the funding altogether, question, um, how would that affect um, um, what funds we get in the future?
If we don't spend the funds, HUD will sanction us. Um, if, if we go into May first and we have the um, timeliness issue, HUD may sanction us for the next year's funding. Um, we'll just have to play that out, there's a lot of communities that are running into the same issue because of the um, CDBG COVID funding. And so there's some pushback on getting them to set aside this timeliness date, but with it being an election year, I don't see that happening.
So this basically is totally about us being able to spend X amount of dollars by May first.
Right.
And that means spent.
Right.
It means not, we're not talking about like, ooh, we got a plan on the table, and it's spent.
Right, we have to spend it and we have to draw it um, down, which takes a couple weeks too.
And regarding this resolution, it's just about actually adding a category so we can spend it by May and not have to go through a lot of the bureaucratic stuff.
Right, we could not spend it if we don't um, amend the plan, we can't.
Okay.
If we do, HUD will make Urbana repay it, so we, we don't want to go down that road.
No, we do not, thank you.
Further discussion on the main motion? Grace?
Um, just want to reiterate that I agree that I think it's important that we keep these funds in the community. Um, I think some of the reality of what I understand of the situation is that um, I don't see how this amendment um, makes or breaks those plans. Um, my understanding is we only need to spend about four or five hundred thousand, about our year's amount. Uh, we've already allocated one point one million of it, well, not budgeted in the plans, um, and that we have until spring to do that. So I'm hopeful in these other options, I think we've heard a lot of great things from the equals projects and potentially this consolidated fund and working with some of our other community partners, so um, I'm hopeful and um, hope that you guys can um, find other ways to spend this money. As far as this amendment, um, it just doesn't make sense to me if there's no plans for any fire projects, how it's worth the time and effort to do all of this if there's nothing planned. Um, so I guess that's my thing, I understand keeping the funds in the community and looking for ways to spend them, but I think that the most important ways are those in direct service to low and moderate income residents and not fire station construction, so I hope it doesn't come to that, and if it does, it comes to us before that, so thank you.
So just clarification for the public, the amendment already passed, so we're, we're working on the main motion as amended. Okay, thank you. Mary Alice.
There's been a lot of discussion about firehouses. Chris's amendment basically says that we cannot spend money on construction. So I ask City Council, staff has done everything that we have asked them to do, pass this proposal, this is crazy. That's it.
Chip?
So um, I want to thank the staff for all your work on putting this together, listening to council feedback, and also to share that I don't think it is crazy or unreasonable for council members to ask questions on behalf of their constituents, and I appreciate the thoughtfulness and the approach that people are taking on this, and would also like to encourage the chair tonight and any future chairs to think about calling a point of order when we hear um, council members being disrespectful to each other as we are trying to engage in this process.
Chandra.
Um, I, I think that this process uh, would have been a lot more smoother initially had you come with like, uh, fire station activity ideas, like. Like you mentioned the defibrillators that you bought in the past and all of this other stuff. I think it probably would have landed a lot better with some council members had it been like, okay, these are some, you know, ideas that we would use the CBGG money for as it relates to fire service activities. Because the way it was, you know, first initially presented and the way we read it, it looked like something completely different. And then just a little bit of miscommunication at the beginning as well. But I think if we could have heard like exactly what types of fire service activities this money could be spent on that impacts and improves the lives of low to moderate community neighborhoods in our community, then I think it would have landed a lot better. So just, you know, for, I guess, I don't know, future reference or whatever. But at least that's how I feel about it. Thank you.
Chris?
Yeah, again, my amendment is simply to, and I said this at the outset, no, I know, no, I know, no. But what I'm just saying is that I just don't want CDBG funds going to fire station construction. That's all it is. I don't feel disrespected by anybody. And Sheila, I guess I would put this out there, is there any way we could help you speed up on spending the money? I mean, you know, because I'm getting approached by all kinds of people that want to have all kinds of ideas. Should I be sending this to you to help you, help this along? I mean, I guess the biggest problem I've had with this whole process is why are we so behind on the spending? I know you said about COVID and all that, I understand that. But I just, I wish we, there was a way, and I know you only got, I'm looking at the entire community development department, but I just, I don't know, I just want to help you spend the money faster.
Sure, right now, we are in the process because we have not done any draws for the current fiscal year. We don't do that till the CAPER closes, which just happened two and a half weeks ago. And so now we will look at what we need to draw, what we spent this first quarter, and then we will look at committed projects with the equal and other commitments that we have made through the normal process. And if we see there's a gap in funding that we really need to move forward with a project, we may come back to you and ask for yet another amendment. I don't, I don't know what that would be, just depends if there's a category that doesn't come. It may be that we issue a request for proposals. It may be that something falls out of this consolidated application process. So we're just trying to be open minded but have a little bit of flexibility. Unfortunately, the memo from Public Works, I wasn't aware, that went to you. At the same time, we're coming to you asking for this amendment so I can see why there was some confusion there.
Thanks. All right, Mary Alice, would you take the chair, please?
Sure, the chair recognizes James.
Yes, I'm going to vote for this as amended. I don't actually think the amendment was to any great change. I thought it was unnecessary. That's why I voted against it. I think the change to the plan is what we need to do. We need to have options, and I'm okay with the restrictions that make other members of the council feel comfortable that money won't be spent in a way that they're, they would not support. I do think that we will look at next year's plan as it's proposed, and if there are compelling reasons to change what we have done tonight, I will consider them. I do believe that it's very important that we spend all of this money, both because it serves our public and because we should not put ourselves at risk for future funding or put ourselves at risk for sanctions. So I will support it. I know I did vote against the change to the date, but that was because I thought it was unnecessary. So thank you, and Mary Alice, I would be happy to.
I relinquish the chair back to James.
All right. Grace?
Thank you. Just some last comments. I think this is a tough one, and I do appreciate that we were able to have a little more time, information, and consideration on it. It sounds like you said that if there were some expenses, that that would come to council?
You requested at one of these past few meetings that we come to you in February and just kind of give you an update on where we're at and then what our thoughts are to get that money spent quickly. You know, I know February seems like a long time from April, but in Brayden and I's world, it's like two weeks. I mean, so we have to just stay on top of this with all of the other things that we have going. So we will bring it back to you and give you an update.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Again, I agree with spending this money. I just don't see how this proposed amendment to the plans really helps with that if there are no fire projects even in mind. So I hope that we can figure some things out besides that, and I do appreciate Chris's question of ways that we can help, and please do let us know if there's things we can advertise or sit on a selection committee or things that we can do to help this process and spend these funds where they need to go.
All right, we are now voting on the main motion as amended to, with the restrictions to run through April 1st, 2024. Chandra?
I'd like to ask for a roll call vote for this instead of a voice vote.
Thank you. I was intending to do that myself, so I appreciate that, though. So seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please call the roll?
And is it the motion for consent agenda? Or regular?
The original motion was.
I can change it to a consent agenda. I'd love to get it over with and have it all agreed upon.
I don't think it was, at the point, it is not for consent agenda, right?
Uh huh.
You did not make it.
The original was not on a point agenda, on a consent agenda, but I could change it to that if Chandra wants to, who seconded it? Mary Alice wants to go along with it?
I don't think that's a request at this point, right, Grace? You were just clarifying.
That was a clarifying question.
I would like then to move it to consent agenda.
The motion's already on the floor.
Okay.
Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr., I'm tired, you guys. It's hard sitting here listening to you guys go over and over and over again on stuff that seems to be extremely simple. So forgive me for messing up, but here it goes. Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Sheila and Brayden. Now we are to the place for council input. Therese?
I just want to say really quickly, I'm just extremely disappointed in how long it took us to pass something so simple that really gives us money and helps the other, helps our communities that are underserved. And maybe this doesn't help us as far as how, how quickly we get our business done. And a lot of times, we're at the razor's edge because of us. We slow us down. And so I really would like to see more cooperation or just more understanding if, you know, you've got two people, and this, I'm going to use this example, two people, two, 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 only two, that are working their selves out, you know, to try to get one to understand what this is. And this was really, when it comes down to it, it was really all about a category. It wasn't about fire stations. It wasn't about fixing fire stations. It was just about a category that HUD said, they said that this is what it is. And so to try to broaden that so that we can spend the money quicker, they wanted to just add that category. But it wasn't about fire stations. It wasn't about spending money for fire stations. It wasn't about building anything for fire stations and how quickly this just got out of hand, and it just really didn't need to. So, I mean, it would have been, you know, so we can, maybe we can have, it could be used for that, but that wasn't the purpose of the resolution. The purpose of the resolution was just to add a category so that we can use the money more quickly. At least that's been my understanding through the past two weeks that we've been discussing this. That was just about adding a category. So I just want, I don't know, I just want us to be more efficient so that we can be more effective.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Just want to take the opportunity to remind folks that democracy is an iterative process. We listen to the feedback from our constituents. When this item first came forward, I voted for it, and I thought it made perfect sense the way it was presented. And then I heard from community members that they were confused and concerned and provided guidance to the staff, which I agree, it is not acceptable to have two staff people doing this load of work. The council does not have a say in hiring. I know that the staff is working very hard to try to address the fact that we are understaffed, but we are responsible for listening to our community and our constituents. And when people are telling us that they are confused, they don't understand why that language is there, we have a responsibility to clarify for the public to make sure that we are providing accurate, clear, and precise information. We still passed the resolution that was requested of us. We took two extra weeks. Yes, I agree, we did take more time. But that was an opportunity for our community to provide feedback to us, for us to listen, and for us to engage in the process of democracy. And I'm sorry if that's an inconvenience, but to me, that is what we are here for. And I do not appreciate the assumption that means that we don't want to share this incredible important resource with our community. Of course we do. But we also have a responsibility to do so in a way that provides clear and accurate information for folks who are watching, for folks who might not know but might need assistance from their government. And so to me, while yes, I understand it was an inconvenience to take more time, this is an example of democracy at work, and that is something that I think that we should respect.
Thank you, Chair. I think I said Mary Alice next, and then Chandra.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that there were several of us who attended a presentation that was sponsored by the City of Champaign, the City of Urbana, MTD, and the Bike Association at the University of Illinois. I really appreciated, it was very thought provoking, wrote, runs Strong Towns, and I wrote down that the name of the gentleman was Chuck Maron? Wrong. I think Chris went to two of them. But it was, it was very interesting, and I really appreciate bringing these types of speakers. They definitely give us food for thought, so.
All right, thank you, Chandra.
Yes, I would echo every single thing Jay said. You practically took the words out of my mouth, but I just want to emphasize that as colleagues, we need to respect each other's opinions and processes, no matter how long it takes. Like some people learn and absorb information very differently. There are seven of us. They were all different with different backgrounds. And so I think we just need to remember to respect each other's processes and opinions. That's how we move things along faster or in a more efficient way, by giving each other the space and room to do so. And then one other thing, I saw that the Cunningham Township is doing a coat drive for winter coats, so be sure to raid your closets for those gently used winter coats that you no longer want to wear and drop them off at the township. And they're also in need of hangers to go with those coats, too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Grace.
Thanks. I agree with Jay and Chandra's points here. Better said than I could, so I'll just piggyback and say ditto. I do appreciate and value the thoughtful discussion, and I think it's important that I don't want to lose thoroughness and professionalism in order of spending less time. I don't think that's appropriate, and that's not what I'm here for. I also just want to remind any public who's bearing with us to this point and watching that we also have our ARPA application open till mid-November for projects to apply for those funds. And another fun event is at the Urbana Landscape Recycling Center. We're having a pumpkin smash event Saturday, November 5th, 11 to 3 p.m. So you can bring your old pumpkins the week after Halloween and smash them in the food scrap compost pile. The Landscape Recycling Center is also accepting pumpkins throughout the fall during open hours to go into the compost pile. So you don't have to watch it deteriorate in your yard and watch all the squirrels eat it. You can come bring it to turn into compost. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mayor Marlin?
It's tough to follow pumpkins, but I'm going to try. I wanted to share with the public who's watching that a new effort is underway. It's part of an educational campaign, a campaign to raise funds for the Champaign County Historical Museum, and an opportunity for folks to take sides, whether you're with Team Urbana or Team Champaign. And this, this campaign has come out of Visit Champaign County, the Champaign County Economic Development Corporation, and Chambana Proud, which is a welcome organization. And one of the questions that our, our community leaders get often is, is it Urbana-Champaign or is it a Champaign-Urbana? And we all, of course, know it's Urbana-Champaign because it's the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign, and we live on the east side of Wright Street. But, but not everybody understands that. So it's an opportunity to get a T-shirt. You can vote by ordering a T-shirt at www.chambanaproud.com. And it's already spurred some interesting articles that people have dug up on the history of our community, and that's what I find fascinating, a couple today already that I've never seen. So I think it's really a great opportunity to learn about our cities, how we grew, how we developed, how we came to be. So Champaign-Urbana or ChambanaProud.com, buy your T-shirt and make sure Urbana's in orange. And the, this campaign goes on through December, and apparently there's a trophy that will join the basketball trophy in my office when we're done, so.
All right, thank you, Mayor Marlin. Chris, did you have comments? Because if you don't, I'm going to ask Mary Alice to take the chair, so I, okay, Mary Alice?
All right, chair recognizes James.
Yeah, two, two things I wanted to mention. One is, when I am chairing, every council member is welcome to raise a point of order if you feel like the discussion or anything has gotten off the rails. Always welcome to do that. I did not, I did not recognize that, but I also am not sitting in anyone's particular chair, so point of order is open to anybody at the, at the table. The other thing I did want to mention, and this is because this happened in my ward in the last week, I'd like to praise our fire department for a fire that occurred on Curriton where I believe, if I have this correctly, on the 14th, the call came in at 3:33, and the fire was put out at, by 3:41. And that was with Urbana responding and help from Champaign as well, I believe. But, you know, smoke and flames out of a roof. We do have a very excellent fire department, and while we may be talking about things that impact them, we should never let it go past where we don't praise them for their work and what an excellent team they are. So thank you, and I'll take the chair back.
And I relinquish the chair back to James.
Unless Chris has anything to say.
I just want to, I just want to piggyback what you just said, though, and this is very important. The discussion that we've been having about whether to use money that was intended for poor neighborhoods to build government building has nothing to do with the quality of our fire department or what we think of them, okay? They are doing a great job, which is why I asked Tim Cowan to produce the calls for medical and calls for fire from those two stations to show that our department does a great job.
Thank you, Chris. I think we can all agree on that. And with that, we have conducted all the business on the agenda, and so we are adjourned.